Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, now we got tax collection. You brought this up while we were talking about it. What I think you just said-
I just, I just got through, I just got through it. And what I wanna do, I wanna see it go back to that October twentieth. They give you fifteen more days, they don't tack on to you. Because you see, if you miss that on the other end, you get interest and penalty. That's six percent penalty, and six percent, that's twelve percent increase on your taxes. And then when it's collected, all we collected was the taxes. How much of that do you get off interest and penalty that you got out there? This is what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to restate my vote for Mr. John's proposal. I know I'm not opposed to it, but I do think county counties may catch us because the taxes are due January one. The fact that bill doesn't go out until September zero. If you had a digest to back up a bill going out on January one, you could do it on January one for that year. I think it's the right system, and I'd like to see it changed without, I think that's the way it is.
Well, here's what happens. Here's what happens. Let me run through it briefly. The law gives you sixty days to pay your taxes, or you're gonna pay interest and the penalty. For all the time, the interest on the time that's over. And if you miss by one minute, that's sixty days, you're late after December twentieth. You're late, you're gonna pay the penalty. And every day after that, your interest accumulates. All right, now, the purpose of, of collecting that money before October twentieth is to bring in that money earlier. That was the purpose, not the penalty and interest thing. That's already set in the game. But that's to bring that money in fifteen days early. So the year before that, what has happened is that you, as, as John Q. Public, have paid taxes not on the benefit of twelve months. You paid it on eleven months, see? Or eleven months and fifteen days. And that's that space in there. It's, it's, it's over. We had a division, and he would fight all of them. Orange Texans. We're doing the same thing. The system was that after every twelve months, you're gonna make six percent on our investment. So what they did, they didn't make the money. They didn't make the profit. But in order to get the profit sharing, what they did was put all their pay- you, you get it on the other end now. They put up all the debts at December thirty first, put them in the next year, and did that. They fired everyone up in the county office, including the janitor. And I met the janitor, and he was saying, "What? Why'd you fire me? I had a working number." The guy told him, "Yeah, but you carried out the waste, the shredded material. You carried it out and burned it." But he gonna give it, the whole thing was, give it a whole, this kind of accounting improper. Folks do it for a purpose. And if your bank can catch you at that, he gonna look at you and smile and everything, say, "I don't wanna deal with these folks." And, and you, you can, it tells, you're giving the guy, John Q. Public, a different idea of what you're doing. You're doing one thing, saying another one. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's it. All right, next thing, what we got? Dupree?
Let's, uh, let's go ahead and get the road naming, because we had it listed before that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, uh, okay, all right.
Okay, we have a road cut into the industrial park for future development. And of course, you know that the state is widening, uh-
Ninety-six.
The ninety-six, uh, bridge, and subsequently the changing the, uh, ramps to and from. And, uh, anyway, the road has been located at a certain point. And in order to get markings and respect the road deserves, we need to give it a name and pass it along to the state so that it will be an established road. Therefore, I make the motion that we name the road Connie Davis Drive.
That's in your district, isn't it?
It is.
Second motion.
You can do it.
You know, Miss Connie Davis, that passed?
She's the lady that, uh, gave the grant and got to help with his office street.
Oh, does she have that business? She's the one-
No, no, no. She's the one who wrote the grant and got the money for it, after he got his street.
Yeah, she passed. I be with her when we were here last board meeting.
He was.
Is that the lady I, I was-
She was very, she passed, but she was very active in helping getting it developed. Way was part of the progress. She did a lot for the county. Helped get this county started and where it's going.
That's what she did.
Who the hell?
He was here last, he was here at the last board meeting talking about the, uh, about the statue out there.
Yeah.
Remember he came forward and talked about the statue?
About the statue?
About three meetings.
Against it.
Three meetings back.
I'm not trying to be smart. That one, oh, that one I'm trying to-
Yeah, I want to do my best, that.
Oh, okay, yeah, I remember him.
See, I know how to relate to this, Chairman.
Yeah, there you go. I, I remember him. I just don't, I can't go to names. Miss Connie Davis, that's, that's a little wild.
I know.
Well, let's neither here nor there.
Yeah, it is.
It will be a county road.
Yeah.
Well, it's not one-
Yeah, I ain't got no, I was just trying to figure out who Connie Davis was.
If it's, if it belongs to industrial authority, I don't think we have any authority to name it.
Well, we, we named it all-
A county road.
The industrial, the Jerseyville Quicks Industrial Board met, uh, I guess the last regular meeting.
The last regular meeting.
And they decided to name that road Connie Davis Drive and requested that I present it since it's in my district, and that's why I'm doing it, so.
But I don't think that we have any, uh, influence on it one way or the other, do we? If it's theirs, they can name it.
Well, see, the, the-
The commissioner's own road.
Yeah, see, if there's a star that did, but there's, there's a star that said that every, everything move that they make, they gonna contact the board of commissioners. Said that the board of commissioners, they gonna keep the board commission up to everything that goes on. I said, roads and revenue, exactly.
So y'all have, uh, suggested anything?
Yes, well, we did that, and we took it in the middle of the month.
All right, we got a motion. Got a second? How you vote? Yes. How long has this lady been dead?
Shoot, about four, five years, I think.
I'm really not gonna, I never-
Cause she taught at, she taught at, to the school.
Right, well, 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 taught at school.
Yeah, and they retired. You know where, what is name, uh?
What is, hold on, I don't know.
Yeah, I know, but you know what robs from fried chicken? What that man named? Where had that service station right there? No.
Collins.
Collins. They stayed with Mr. Collins. They been with Mr. Collins, huh? They bought that property.
Oh, okay, I know what you're talking about, now, now, I held on nine six.
Nine to six, we didn't even-
You gotta look for him.
There you go, they bought that property.
Yeah, okay. I just couldn't put a paper in place. All right, now, we got, Dupree?
Don't you see this for the name they speak at?
Okay, uh, I had not seen it until I got in this season, but it appears to be a request for building permit for a house that's burned down, and also for a safety tank.
Well, that's Mr. Dupree right there. He was, his was a house on Coop Prime Road burned up. And all you asking to do is rebuild your house, right?
Right, and rebuild, uh-huh.
And that's in your district, much of the-
So I recommend, I make a motion that we approve the request for the building permit and the safety tank.
If he gonna build his house like that, would he need, and he got a safety tank there?
Yeah, but they go, you're going in large, I think, somewhere. He's trying to explain this over the phone, and I told him, "Get ahold of," what's that lady's name? Miss Colley?
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
So you're expanding it, or?
Yeah, my, uh, puts more room and stuff onto it. I guess more rooms-
He gonna build a safety tank. Is it the same one, or replacing it?
Replace it.
What, you got a town gal?
Probably not. That's, that's where you have to replace it.
I have, I have, it was over there.
The size of the house determines the size of the tank and the amount of, uh-
None, none of the man.
Feet, a regular, a regular, all that stuff.
None square feet of that house.
And we picked up some more to them, too, didn't we?
Right, right, we are.
Thank you, boy.
Boss.
Boss, yes. I gotta learn how for young.
How many are, uh, square feet you going in? I'm looking at this here.
About six or something, six or so?
How many?
Four thousand.
Four thousand.
Forty-four hundred.
Forty-four, forty.
Forty-four.
I got drove in a Porsche, young, that's just miserable. That's why I wanna go with this, young, and I get a lean.
All right, got a motion. Got a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Any more discussion? How you vote? Yes.
No, oh. Question for you. Certain provisions of your staff, your code, require participation by the tax assessor's office in terms of getting things approved. I just mentioned that because if it's not been-
What did you go with?
Well, uh, six, six, three, six, six, zero, point, three, one, one. Apparently, the application, the permit goes to the tax assessor's office first, has it been there. That's the first question I have. And the tax assessor has certain statutory duties. Now, before I got here, I know we had some problems down there that we wanna try and get on board with. And I don't mean to hold up the gentleman's project, but under six, six, oh-
What do you need to do? He got a contract that been sitting there three or four days waiting.
No, I, I'll be more than happy to get a copy of it from, uh, Mr. Mercer. But you have to go to the tax office.
That's a must, Dupree.
And I'll get with him right over. And the tax assessor has to, uh, basically make a affirmative statement that all taxes have been paid. Uh, and they have to basically sign off on it before it comes here.
Well, we can go ahead and do that.
Can we do this conditional on this?
I was gonna say, yeah.
If you do this, I would suggest, I'll make my motion that we do this
Condition based on approval by the tax commissioner and tax assessor office. So they'll expedite.
I'll second that.
Yeah, they can go ahead. You only gotta have somebody sit and eat and play and rock.
How you vote? Yes.
Yes, yes.
Lord, I'm a-
You can, I assume you can get that tomorrow?
That's a- Trying, wrong.
Let me see, I gotta work in one, uh.
You have anybody in your family?
This is conditional on that being done, this part.
I went to, I really went to the airport. Do you have taxes? I already tell you, there is paying pay there.
You go, go, go tell them, go for it.
Yeah, I need, I need to break down. You need to start dignifying them tomorrow.
Please, no, while I'm sitting here.
I think we need to go through the way-
May I?
When do you, when do you come up and make them just have to write that?
He gonna tax yourselves off. He ain't gotta-
I'm thinking if, if you approve it tonight and give me the application, I will carry it down.
Well, that is already approved conditionally on you guys' program.
Okay, and then we'll, we'll go ahead and get processed.
The only, the only thing I do approve is taxes been paid, right?
That's it. Is that it, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, that's, uh, that's the bigger thing. And I need to give to the tax-
You wanna cut?
Yeah.
There you go.
And I need to give to the tax assessor office because the permit has to be made to the tax assessor first. But I'll copy this off for you all, and we'll take it. But if we do it conditionally, I'm comfortable with that.
All right, that it?
No. Tax assessor's board, make sure, whatever, put it on that.
Okay.
All right, as I'd stated in the last meeting, refining things that's almost unbelievable that has not been done, and things that have been done, it's total in violation of Georgia code. And, uh, just as an example, returns for Wolf Creek, they reported three sales when in fact they've got nine sales out there. And when you start talking millions of dollars, well, you gotta have people on board that can go out and do the field visits and, uh, get photographs and show proof. Because when they appeal, you gotta be able to defend that, that appeal. And that's a big problem, as you know, with several situations we're facing right now. And what I'm saying is, we need, uh, at least one more person down there that's trainable or that is always, already qualified as a level one or whatever that we can get out there and just dedicate that individual to doing field work. Yeah. And, uh, there's where the money and the county's ability to go out and do work that's required.
What was the lady's name? Angela. She was an appraiser two. She was an appraiser two. That's when they said that, when they were cutting back, when, uh, uh, Mr. Dennis said that, Mr. Barton said that he had to get rid of one of them employees over there. And he got rid of her, and, and what, they didn't hire the share wife?
Yeah, well, that's when they hired her.
Yeah, and she wasn't an appraiser zero, but he got rid of appraiser two, and they brought her in and stuff.
Wasn't she back?
No, no. But see, with two, see, she was, see, this is a black lady. She was Angela. Now, see, there's, there's white Angela over there.
Also Angela, right?
Yeah, her name is Angela, too. And so she was an appraiser two. And, and so I figured that she, she worked here about five years, then they terminated her. Said they had to cut back. And I suggest that, see, can you locate her? She's not willing to bring her back in because she is familiar with this county.
And also in that, in that, when all that happened, it wasn't agreement with her if things picked up from Mr. Barton and the previous chief appraiser. When the county got back in a better condition, they would reoffer her her job.
Uh, do you have an appraiser two that I had heard something about, all of a sudden can't go ride or something?
Well, she's now, uh, able to ride, and she's now able to go out in the field.
Is she doing it?
Is she doing it? She's doing it.
Yeah.
And, uh, for a person that-
A lot of bad, that's why she's insecure.
Yeah, that, that illness is already overcome.
Good, yeah, because we made it clear we need somebody to do the job.
We can't, we cannot pass out welfare checks, and if a person's being paid for doing the job, and they can't do it or won't do it, they gotta drag their bag on down to the next door.
Now, there's a lot of other reasons that we need a next one because there's a lot of things were done at present at the other, uh, appraiser.
Is this needed, you need a budget amendment for this?
No, we got, it's in the budget.
We've got, we've actually got the money.
In the budget.
In the budget.
We did away with the two contractors that were drawing welfare checks, going out, I don't know what they were doing.
Well, I was horrified, wasn't?
Yeah, they weren't going out and doing, doing their job.
More than that, I think.
And, and here we've got, uh, currently, uh, properties and cell towers and everything else that we're finding. We've got forty-eight cell towers in Tooee County.
That on-
And we got twenty-two being-
Yeah, two years, more than two years ago, Mr. Fowler and myself went in there asking Mr., uh, what the chief appraiser, that, 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 and, uh, he said, oh, he was gonna get on it, and he never did.
Blazing the trail, if you listen to what was being said back then. And the fire went out, and, uh, coals are cold.
And Mr. Bond was talking about getting Canada back on the footing to go on year by year on the stuff. And some of the stuff we found was not a little bit of money, not a little bit of dollars. These are, these are billion dollar properties that we-
Yeah, the problem is, is one, as you, you two gentlemen, three gentlemen note, it's one twenty-four hour period.
It's January first.
And, uh, and the tax assessor did it since January one.
The next day, if you had a digest, you'd send out the bill and excuse.
Well-
Within sixty days of the notes.
Yeah, just an example of what we discovered today. And I don't know what Mr. Bryan had against me when he assigned me to that job down there, but it's taken a lot more than I thought it was gonna take. And, uh, sale, uh, a sale out at Wolf Creek, the previous, uh, chief appraiser valued it at twenty percent.
Twenty percent of what?
Of its total value, six million dollars.
Oh, you mean Wolf Creek itself? Yeah.
No, 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 just one sale.
Just one sale.
And they only, they only gave a return of three sales, which was seven, eight, and nine. They completely inadvertently forgot about sales one through six.
Did I have on book?
I have on book, done. We told them about it. They were supposed to have done it. But when we come to find out about what really happened at the end, he was supposed to have done, he didn't do it, so now-
Didn't do it, and, and here we're pointing it out to him, and he had six months to edit and didn't. But these are just, you know, things that we're uncovering just by getting out into the field and seeing what's going on.
And like we went one day-
The, the sale wasn't on no kind of record.
No, fine, they reported sales seven, eight, and nine, said that's all we got.
He didn't go out and check up on them?
No, three years they had the generator system out there selling electricity to Georgia Power, and he didn't even know about that until we took him out last year and showed him.
And they had it all in the juice pipe, so they left it, right, they cut the ribbon.
That was all they had.
I think all the capital was one out.
End and something like that.
Uh-huh. Uh, all he's got, all he picked up was the maintenance building and the Skell's house, and that was it.
He knew that was them because we give it to them.
Yeah, and just like the old building over here by Academy that they're storing those boats in. Near it is as big as day. Never saw it. Missed it.
What about that into Farm Bureau?
Oh, that's another story.
But not just the Farm Bureau, all the commercial and-
Then they have to talk to Farm Bureau on the book.
Yeah, they had it on the book. They gave, they gave them a reduced value because of, of, uh, economic, uh, obsolescence.
And that's all the commercials.
And they're the only one-
Farm Bureau is a big issue.
Economical obsolescence.
Yeah, well, they're called, yeah, because the church and the railroad tracks.
That's external obsolescence. That's external, not obsolescence.
It's obsolescence.
Well, technically, that's called a big name by that.
But because it, it's, uh, it takes away from the value of the property. What, none of the others, Robinson, don't have a, an assessment reduction? None of those private houses down here received any benefit? No one else?
But Farm Bureau.
But Farm Bureau. Property across the street, thirty-five thousand dollars. The one right next to it, nine thousand dollars value. Now, it was-
The land?
The land.
Well, the devil's land. I've got oil on the other day.
They ain't there.
They're joining.
They are, they're joining.
We had a board over there.
It's all messed up. That's what we asked for. We need somebody to help us. It's all messed up. It's gotta be straightened out because yours made the fact you need the money. The money's there. It's just that you gotta go out there and get it. Want the whole thing, and we just got back from class.
If it's a level two, I guess we need to come up to about twenty-five. But if it's someone hired that's trainable, then twenty thousand. And, and we're still saving money over what the county was paying.
Y'all got any money in mind?
We gotta advertise, just like the opposition for the-
Well, I move that we authorize the additional tax, uh, appraiser as described by the board member here, by the tax assessor that is here.
And if something else, I would do, uh, bring it for-
Let, let, let's motion before-
Don't get fooled.
Motion on the floor.
All right, got a motion. Get a second?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? How you vote? Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, something else I'd like to bring for permission for them, for y'all, for permission to think about in the very near future. Okay, I would be helpful, okay. It's really not seamless for the work we have to do because there are some kind of roads, some dirt roads that they have to go in. They really need a four-wheel drive vehicle. Because some of those roads is nearly impossible to go in and sit and view these properties in a two-wheel drive vehicle we have.
Unless Walt is driving.
Unless Walt drives it.
He did that out at Canada Sports, and I swear, I thought we were gonna get a ride out there sometime. Walt didn't hesitate.
We just went right on through. Never let up on the gas.
But that's something-
Y'all bad about this driving, or?
No, he doesn't.
No, Tom Lee can attest to that.
I say, okay, I can attest to that.
I was, you know, uh, we went to Atlanta one time. We were out in Florida, and they started to break it down. But, uh-
But, uh, I think-
There's a sure spirit, I believe.
Yeah, yeah. But I, I, but I think the board had did the right thing, chose the right people that put on these boards since, since the first, uh-
They were helping with the permit, too, now, this person will help with the permit.
And everything. And so they done a good job because they definitely bringing, that's where our money come from.
You can't see anything sitting behind a desk, uh, handling customers as they come in. You've got to get out into the field.
Being here eight, nine, ten o'clock at night, lights on over there. Eight, nine, ten o'clock at night, lights on over there, new account could be- Yeah, what, what's, I, I think, what was, as I came to that meeting, they all agreed with me that, that the board member wasn't doing their job.
Yeah, they did, even the chief appraiser.
Yeah, the, you know, the chief appraiser agreed with me, and I came here to the meeting. And I said, within three months' time, look at all the problems that they have found already. And I said, what was that? Y'all wasn't doing y'all's job. And they all agreed with me that it wasn't doing their job.
We still had two thousand thirteen pills to do. So you figure, two thousand thirteen was left over, and we having to deal with. It's catching up now. We all-
We found today, two thousand and thirteen, we thought, was as far back as we're gonna have to go. Not true, two thousand and twelve.
And when you get to twelve, you're going far and far down.
That's true.
Why don't y'all bring us, uh, some bids for the vehicle we want?
Give us time to look, see, maybe we can get-
That's what, so-
Might be careful up there.
Sheriff's got a brand-new Dodge four-wheel drive over there. He might love to show us something.
I'm not gonna lie to you, that-
I see. I'm the one, uh, like, stop getting all this supposed free stuff. It costs us an arm and leg, insurance, maintenance, and everything else. Buy what you need. Forget that government junk. Cause that government junk costs this county a pile of money.
And plus, plus she drives down here, gets out of there, goes and gets into this circle, so it's not causing them to go back for it.
All forty, however, how many vehicles they got over there, a lot of government, a lot of complicated. We're paying insurance, we're paying maintenance, we're paying fuel, on and on. It gets expensive.
We can get with you of that, but we just need to get somebody to help us.
Why don't y'all decide what you want, would like to have, and present it to us?
We don't need a radio or, uh, XM radio, none of that stuff, just a vehicle.
Either that.
A work truck.
To get to, a work truck, that's it.
Do you need the high-dollar wheel?
No, don't need that either.
It's all with us.
Because it's gonna get messed up, so it's gonna go in dirt roads.
Because y'all deserve, but y'all deserve not ragged junk, but y'all deserve new stuff.
We found houses that were a half a mile off the road. They built the house, never had a permit. The house is standing, beautiful home. It's all up, it's a long ways off the road, and no permit, not even on a digest. And it's not collecting taxes.
We just took pictures from inside the vehicle because he had a dog about that high. And he didn't look to be friendly. We stopped at that point.
Even houses that's a hundred thousand dollars on the value. Even houses that's a hundred thousand dollars on the value. Houses.
Not even on the digest.
And that's twenty thousand value to the county.
We talked to the state. That's in every county that has that.
How did you get the current oil hooked up with our permit?
I-
I thought it was a road now where I follow.
Can't date people out there have built, you would not believe what they built. We found one that had a-
Didn't have permits and they had electricity. In defense of our operation, I can say that recently, about a month and a half ago, uh, I was contacting, taking a look at something, the electrician, uh, some stuff turned on to a, an illegal development. Yeah.
That being, uh, a very tiny, tiny, uh, travel trailer park that would be created. So that system didn't work that time. And if we continue to give everybody that's supposed to have a copy of the applications or permits, applications actually, then it will continue to work. If that would did work, that's a whole night.
Well, that's a tiny operation. We found one on eighteen.
I realize that, but I'm saying, if finally the system's been operating the way it's designed years and years ago.
They had fifteen travel trailers in there, and ain't a one first one that ever been reported to be in there.
And how much tax we getting off of them?
None.
Nothing.
But it's the same zone, it's all one?
Um, what was it? I think it was all one.
Well, see, they're in violation of the zone.
And several businesses, there's all, all one.
And it's got security cameras, it's got all the bells and whistles, old trailers, but they, they rent them out during the year for harvest.
Yeah.
If I may offer you all just to point the example that ties in. I'm sorry for the gentleman's delay tonight on this, but if we go back to our code, the first step before anybody gets a building permit is they have to go to the tax assessor's office first. And so one of the things that I'll ask for mission from the board, if you all feel it's appropriate, is to go through our code and make sure we have a system that matches the code so that they have notice first. And that's a condition precedent to coming to see you all.
And that's a condition precedent to coming to see you all, we probably should have a form that comes out of the tax office with all the boxes checked, therefore these, well. The lady who charges the office and these gentlemen will have notice of what's being done, so we won't have surprises in the future. But I think that's a step we're missing right now.
Can you fix us that?
I'm sorry?
Can you fix us that?
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna, with your permission, we're gonna go through and make sure that we get this done in the right order, and the right order, by our own ordinance is, you don't come here until you go to the tax assessor's office first. After the tax assessor signs off, then they come to you all.
Well, if we had the system that was in place, or the one that you're referring to, either one, operating, they would not have these properties that come from that, what is this? That would be on a digest.
That's right, yeah, and, and one good deterrent, you catch them out there like we've been catching, double their permit fees, that's what all the other counties are doing, they're finding them.
Do you need a motion to back that up, or can you just do it?
Well, if you, with instruction from you all, why don't I find out what system we're supposed to be operating under, and then you all make the necessary changes?
Then you're gonna present it to us, right?
I'm sorry, sir?
Then you're going to present it to us.
Yes, I'll present it to you next meeting. Thank y'all. Thank you.
Well, we shall appreciate you.
I wouldn't you say double a permit if somebody's already built this house, and they get a permit?
If they fail to get a permit, then double every permit to the stage of the building, uh, process at that point. And, uh, Centerville's doing it, Dublin's doing it, and they have cut way back on people going out there and doing their, their own thing.
I was about to say that.
Because bad news always gets out there, you know?
Well, I, well, what, uh, I find out, I find out that my son live two houses from the chairman, he had my son have a separate tank, got a well.
The chairman lives over here with God City Water.
It was God City Water, City Seward, but he had my son, Mr. Dillon, put down there, that he had a separate tank and a well. My son, he live two houses from, uh, uh, Mr. Bennett, and they had him down there for a separate tank and a well.
I was wondering if you can talk about this one?
No, I live around there, I, 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 when you said chairman, I was talking about.
He had a son that, that has a separate tank and a well, he got him into the city water.
Yeah.
And by the way, I want to.
He had a well, he had a well.
And separate tank.
And I want us to certify now, that they went down, got that cert.
I get, yeah, the city, you got City Seward down there?
Uh-uh, I got City Water, that's all.
You got it all?
That's it. Anybody, anybody in the county that's only have City, City Water, not City Seward?
When we live two, two houses down, they have them in a well.
We live two houses down from Mr. Bennett's house, they had him with a separate tank and, 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 and a, a well.
Good time, no.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, let's go. Anybody in the public wanna stop, talk to us before we go into executive session?
Yeah, I wanna say something.
Go ahead.
I don't use the sentence, when you're talking about taxes, I wanna say something. I got a house up on eighty, and I paid thirty-seven thousand dollars for it in seventy-two, and that tax tripled. I don't understand that, man, and I don't even stay in it. I don't even stay in it.
It tripled in one year?
Only thing I have is lights on.
It tripled in one year?
It's, I've been paying, it, it valued at eighty-nine thousand dollars right now, and I sent it to the county, they can buy.
You still have time to file a appeal.
I, I, I'm just, I'm just playing, y'all think what's a good job you're doing, I'm just telling.
Tomorrow morning, go over to the office to file a appeal, you still have time.
You just can't understand why it's eighty-nine thousand dollars, I just stay in it, I just keep the lights on.
And going for, and going for the border escalation.
Where he got to go there for a file appeal?
It just valid people, John, it's a field, but that's the process, that's what you're gonna have to do, give them a look at it. Yeah.
That's what we doing now, we having to go every one of the properties, show them what they got. And so we'll get that straightened out, but like you say, come up there and talk to us, then we can get.
He backed that.
They got houses, same as two-story houses, last single-story houses, it's been taxed like that.
The month, early part of December, we went through every pre-bill. That Troy County has, and found, found things that didn't make rhyme or reason. And, uh, through the process of fixing, eight hundred and ten pre-bills. So.
We had one went fourteen thousand to forty-one thousand dollars, and it's a mobile home bought ten years ago. It depreciated, it went up.
Got a dog house that was fifteen hundred dollars earlier.
Fifteen.
A dog, a dog house.
Dog, dog, that's.
Walk.
Now, it was a nice dog house, but, yeah, it'll probably cost two, three hundred dollars.
Was it air-conditioned?
No, didn't have air-conditioning, and no lights in it either.
It was a pretty dog house, don't get me wrong.
But it had a bridge, fifteen hundred dollars.
Not no fifteen hundred dog house, it just has dogs living in it. I guess you got to have a house like this house, I know a lot of people do that.
I'm saying, I, I understand what you're saying, uh, cause personally, you're talking about three hundred percent, one year mine went up six hundred percent. And all of a sudden had a, a big pond, Kellin Pitts was a pond. You know, six hundred percent one year, and three years before that, we had evaluated the whole county. In that one year, you know, if I had my chalkboard, I show you what really happened. Some went up six hundred percent. And then, uh, it went down, some people went down. The very next year raised the mileage rate, so on top of my six hundred percent, it's been popped up there, and the other fellow over there, he just moved up. And, uh, you know, and the only way you get to the property, it had two, two rugs on it. And there was a big padlock on each one of them, asking them to go in there, yeah, we went in there, I asked and said, how high did you fly your helicopter? You couldn't have driven in there, but they, they look at their area photograph, that's what he doing, he looking at their photograph, he ain't checking the property. Any pictures, two-dimensional, not three-dimensional.
There's a beautiful pond.
Yeah.
Right here on Highway ninety-six, there's a goat farm there, and over down the hill, it's a goat farm, it's a nice pond, stock pond on top of that field. And we're gonna walk in there, uh, probably try to, we're gonna go down there and take a look, see what's really going on. Make an insurance policy, make an insurance policy, not a four-wheel drive.
And this is probably thought, they don't wanna go by the counter truck, y'all leave it there for you.
Yeah, probably, probably.
If you need a bit, if you don't need that job.
Well, if they don't want us in there, then we have to get somebody to do it. The department of revenue, you're talking about, do it. Go and try to do it, if he runs you off, then you just.
He gonna crawl.
What's your little new print?
See, I need to begin in the morning to sign for the permit, is the contract to sign for it, or what?
Get for this man right here tonight, that man come right now.
I got a copy of your.
He ain't got, he's not, he's not, he has a signature for the permit.
Mr. Ashby, uh, there should be a form in the tax office, uh, well, we can, we can instruct one for him tomorrow, but we'll have forms ready.
I have a contract to come in the morning, it's supposed to start, if you want to start tomorrow, so I'll be working in the morning, and so I don't know, cause he's signed, do I need to stay up with you in the morning to sign it or what?
All you gotta do is run your, well, you pay your taxes.
Yeah.
Ain't that right?
Actually, don't even need that, we can verify the taxes.
Walk, go, thank you, Mr. Law, do that, can't you?
Yeah.
And you wanna take off work, sir, or your wife to bring it up now?
Yeah, because.
My wife work.
Because you have to, you have to put on the tax, I just.
They work it out, so you got a little.
Mr. Ashville will guide you through it.
Yeah.
If you, see that man right there before you leave, man?
You got, you, do you have to leave now, he can go talk with you now, y'all can get that stuff, yeah, y'all can get that stuff now, cause you gotta go to work in the morning, we don't wanna hold you up. And so you give, um, Mr. Asher here, and he can go out there and show you now, and do it now while you can need it.
Like the gentleman was saying, see, the whole idea of when you come to different places, different people seeing you different places, in your health department, then you gotta go here, gotta go here, gotta go here. With somebody, somebody, that's showing me, people don't know the job.
Well, health department's septic tank and well.
All right.
And you've covered that already.
Okay.
Right?
Right, yeah.
Well, he's not doing well, cause you don't see the water, right?
Yeah, I don't see the water, yeah.
City water, okay.
Septic tank is a, a septic tank.
Who'd you pay the, uh, for fifty-two?
They paid better than me.
You received it already?
Paid for it.
Okay. Uh. With the board's permission, I'll go ahead and action this tomorrow morning, with all this, we'll get him going. Contract will handle this point, so you've done all your homework there, and I'll look through it, and it looks, I just touch on that, or not, for executive session. Let me go down those there for your reading, but, so that you all had it, and then executive session, well, I'll skip the ones for executive sessions.
You have a phone?
A good record, appropriate record.
Put that on here, right?
Okay.
Well, I have a lot of trouble.
On the, uh, you've got two books, and I apologize, my effort to get it to you electronically on February third did not work, so that's why. The table of contents on, uh, the meeting on February third. Mr. Chairman Fowler had asked for information on bonds for mineral haulers, that will be tab one, Chairman Fowler, on, uh, in that particular code section, any county commissioner.
Yeah, you give us that, we.
That's right, there is a rezoning procedure which I've sent out for us, outlined, uh.
We still on tab one?
No, I just was moving to tab two, tab two for you.
Okay.
There's a rezoning procedure which I've sent out internally there for you, three, and I'll leave for executive session. Tab four, I have an update on, that was a procedure to abandon a county road, and speaking with the attorney who appeared for the commission, uh, he's decided that, he didn't wanna call that an application, so he just, he said, when I'm ready, I will file a written application. And that's on that night road issue that we had.
Okay.
So that is now off of your to-do list until it comes back.
Okay.
Number five is the draft of the local law on mileage reimbursement, and I know Chairman Fowler's going to ask, Chairman Fowler, I've got two phone calls in to the, uh, attorney, that, uh, the legislative attorney who's handling this, I don't have an update yet, but he said he was working on it, so I, I don't have an answer for you there.
All right.
So there's nothing other than tab three, which would be reserved for executive session. The report, written report is.
And while we're reserved in that executive session, and we're talking about the legal here and other things here, why were you going to executive session?
These, these were not, they were, the legal goes to matters which are of lawsuit pending, probable, or potential. Uh, issue three may, uh, I'll discuss that with you in the executive session, may bring that about, but one, two, four, and five were just responses to questions that were put to me that don't cover lawsuits. In other words, issues like abandoning a road, that's a procedure that you all talked about, and that's not a lawsuit, uh, the issues of, uh, the hauling damage, that was a statutory interpretation, so that's not part of the executive session. Cause there's no pending lawsuit or potential for one there.
I don't see where he lives, things would be, I think that should be done in public.
There are some legal things in there.
Well, fine, there's legal things on what he just covered, and I don't see the.
Well.
I think we should do it.
I will, I will take direction from the board, uh, and if I may, make you prefer the direction, if we look at the second book, because, uh.
Second book?
The second book is.
There you go, one.
Oh, I have one.
Yeah, there's one for, you should, everybody should have one for the third and one for the seventeenth.
Everybody have, everyone put a third right here.
I got a third, I got a seventeen.
There, huh?
Right back, we got a notebook.
Three and seventeen, three and, everybody should.
I got one for seventeen, the one I was looking at.
Well, here's three, right, here's three, right here.
There's an extra three right there.
Here's three, right there.
All right.
I thought we'd already got the.
Well, if they, I talked to Mr. Mercer, he said he did not have a chance to get them to you, I reprinted them for you, if he didn't get them, I wanted everybody to have a copy.
I copied everything.
Did, okay, I apologize for giving you the extra stuff, all right. Now, as to the book of the seventeenth, there are some concerns about the Helios Sage zoning decisions. Which, uh. Have the potential to lead to litigation, uh, if you all wanna talk about them here, that's fine, but that's, that's the only matter.
What tab one?
One.
February seventeen, number one.
February seventeen, tab one. Mm-hmm. Nothing is pending, uh, yet, in terms that I know, but it, uh, it does raise a potential question. The rest of them do not, uh, number two is, we reviewed the planning and zoning ordinance, because of course we had a planning and zoning office, which we don't have now. Our planning and zoning ordinance has some extra steps in there which are no longer applicable. So in tab two, our list of the changes which would be for you all to consider to amend your ordinance, so that it now fits what we have for an office. There's a redlined version in the back, listed as exhibit A, when I say in the back, in the back folder, uh, which shows you, which shows strikeouts, uh, to your, I know nothing you do in one night, but we wanted to give you that for consideration. It's like your building code section, there are gonna be some changes that are necessary now that the planning and zoning office is all located within the county clerk's office. And so there are extra steps there that probably need to be removed, and we need to be more efficient in our code section, cause a lot of it frankly doesn't apply anymore. Tab three, there's a question of who's responsible for litter and trash, there's a brief answer there. A short answer is, we do have some, uh, one ordinance that says it's liable for it. You don't have a good one, is how you track who threw the trash there and who takes care of it, there's really no good answer, Chairman Fowler, I think you posed that one for me.
Yep.
Uh, Chairman Watson asked a question, uh, about applicability, general applicability of benefits, uh, and on insurance, or for sheriff's employee.
No, of civil service.
Civil service, excuse me, all right.
Civil service, it is the sheriff's department and all other departments in the county, they're being paid and benefited by our civil service system, does that include the sheriff's department?
Yes, it does, the sheriff's, the sheriff's office is, must be compensated, including benefits, in a manner similar, not, I guess you should say compensated, or, must receive the same benefits, similar benefits as everybody else is all employed.
Uh, the, I think what prompted that is, I don't know, I have a check noted, Garnon, has the sheriff been given out raises?
Yes.
He has?
Yes.
Well, I, we, see, we said no raises.
Okay, I, I did, I'll look at the raise question specifically for you, what I understood was, with the benefits issue.
But, whereas if, he runs his own show, because as do three other constitutional offices. But if he wants to be on our civil service, then, uh, does he have to comply with the guidelines which have set up on civil service, such as no raises issue?
Well, you see the point about this here, they can say we micromanage all, all constitution, all wants to be signing their budget, they can do anything they wanna do with that money, all they can do is just cut their budget.
Uh.
So we need to know how this, how that shakes.
Well, what's he, the money, well, what's he, the money that we get, find out how much money he increases, gave out, uh, 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 cost of inventory, we come back and do a revolution and cut his budget from that amount of money. Every time they get raised, we can cut the budget, we can come back and cut the budget because it wasn't in his budget, but see, they can take their money and do anything they wanna do with it, that's what we signed, cause they constitution up. And so, we gonna get the number, how much money that he gave raises to, then we come back and cut the budget because he be coming in here.
All the benefits are enumerated in the personnel manual, uh, or the file we handled, I believe we referred to it as same thing. Uh, then if they're a part of that civil service, don't they have to comply with that civil service?
Okay.
I think we'll find that it's not cost of living raises, it's longevity raises.
Well, longevity rate go by, go, go, if they gonna go by longevity, about what we go in there, then you can't come up against somebody longevity rate, they ain't been here for two years.
Does it matter what he calls it?
Because, because it, in there, it states how many years you have to be here before you can draw longevity.
Because he budgets, he budgets the longevity increases and his budget.
We deny all the increases.
You sure? Did, did you see any, did, did he have that in there for, because you don't have to budget that, that is automatic. You don't budget that, that is automatic, a longevity, when you reach them number of years, cause it go to twenty years when his mic's out, and when you, although year, you don't have to put that in your budget, cause that gonna come automatic. Come out of general focus.
But it's normally it's dependent, it should be budgeted.
It's not budgeted, it's not budgeted.
We should budget hours.
Well, 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 it's not budgeted because, because we have so many, we don't know, cause you don't only have so many people per year to get longevity.
Tab five, I'm sorry, I need to get it off.
And some of them don't, some of them don't match down.
Tab five was the proposed resolution which you all have dealt with, and tab six is just for information purposes only, we're making progress on the Country Kitchen and Seafood LLC contract, which is the food for, uh, the jail. And both parties have a proposed draft, and I'm waiting to find out if either has objections or modifications, uh, simply being delivery of food and how we make it happen so that everybody's on the same page. So, Deputy Falk has been looking at it, and the owners of Country Kitchen Seafood LLC have it, and we've also included a provision for, uh, personal liability on this. We don't want the LLC ducking, because we've got to get people fed at the jail, day in and day out, if we get, so, that's just for informational purposes. I will address Helios Sage if you all would like, it's up to you.
I would like to have it addressed, we addressed other legal matters, let's address it. That's my way I feel, though.
Uh, what?
We've addressed other legal matters here, why are we hiding to, uh, ask the EDOC?
Mr. Watson, it didn't matter hiding anything, when you have a potential lawsuit, or, or anything, when you, when you discussing legal matters. The purpose of executive session is that, where you form your defense, or your plan, your operation, you throw it out to the public, you're just feeding it right back to the people who are gonna burn you up.
Well, we just fed a lot of stuff up.
Well, that, that is.
This age.
What? You think we all bring it up now? Look at me, I don't care.
I run it good here.
No, on the advice of our attorney, um, about with his advice, and therefore I say no, we should do it in executive session.
Two and two then, moment.
What's your advice?
My opinion is, it would be appropriate for executive session, you all don't need to keep it there, but I, my, my opinion is, at this point, it is appropriate for executive session. You all can hear it publicly, you need to.
When you say it's appropriate, is it, is it requ, is it recommended to do it, is there any need to have it in executive session?
Given the definition that it is an item which. Would lead to a legal claim, I think I'd have to say yes.
Anything on this list would lead to that?
I do not, I wouldn't, I respectfully disagree with that, Mr. Watson.
I said could.
I don't know that information leads to it, you all taking action on Helios Sage, which I think you would need to review, or need to be brought to speed on, I think that action may, uh, present you all with, uh. A potential lawsuit, I'll leave it at that.
Well, does that have to do, does that have to do with the confidentiality request they made?
No, sir, there's nothing, confidentiality request has really sort of died down in the moment of session.
Moving for executive session, Mr. Chairman.
Got a second?
Second.
What reason? Legal personnel and rental estate.
Exactly.
Well, he, the chairman has only, I mean, the attorney's only mentioned one reason for it.
I just mentioned in my motion, the three reasons, and the motion's on the floor.
Got a second, any more discussion? Hey, you booked, yes?
Yes.
No.
Oh, yes.
Okay, let's, let's go.
Alright, anybody else want to say anything before we go? We're going at one minute out of nine. Now, get with this man before you leave now, get the dog, before that man go to work tomorrow.
See the man around the table, I don't care who's preaching sermon, I want to make the collection.
Alright, that's what it's like.
I got a hat I want to pass around.
Yeah. There you go. Alright, y'all, come on out of there.
Also, just want to get two books, you got two, right, you got three and seventeen.
Oh, no issue.
Oh, three and seventeen.
Yeah, I got mine.
I have two.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Don't make it.
I have two. You've been reading my book.
Picking your copy and you're eating.
Yeah.
I have that down to the attorney, so I, I won't forget it.
We back in session there. Thirty-two, thirty-three. Okay.
Back in the executive session, Mr. Chairman. Make a motion to back in the executive session.
I mean, right.
I missed a right session.
Right, sorry.
Hey, you booked, yes?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we employ Mr. Jay May as, as a candidate, and Mr. Bernard Hig as the C D L, what C D L is, and. Mr. May at thirteen dollars starting off, and Mr. Law, and, uh, Mr. Hig at ten dollars starting off, and after six months, we'll get the probation.
Second's motion.
Got a second, any more discussion up? Hey, you booked, yes?
Yes.
One more thing we supposed to do, one more, what was that?
No, it's just, I just need permission on one other item, and that is, uh, received notice from the city attorney from chair of the bill, and gentleman from the state, that we have about thirty-six names that. Either are in the wrong district, or maybe in the wrong district, and I need to get with our voter registrar to address that, and I need permission for you all, obviously, to go do that job.
Why would, uh, why wouldn't they take it to the election supervisor?
See, they redistricted.
Yeah, in other words, they just got, they probably have some computer.
Yeah, but why are they trying to run up our legal bill, when they can take it straight to the election supervisor?
I think the election supervisor said that, is it she?
Yeah, she.
Wasn't gonna do it until or unless you all said it had to be addressed.
I know a lot of people it's the wrong district, by the way. Lots of them.
Well, one of the things that we're obligated to do is, to the registrar's office, giving the, uh, board of elections, is to have everybody in the right district.
Well, the city is responsible for that, and so they got to pay. See, they got to pay, because, but, but see, they pay, they pay, uh, they, they pay us, because we run the election for them, for the city, not the county. And the city has to up the money, everything be changed, you got to get a city up here. You get a city up here. They got to turn.
Well, that's right, he brought it to me.
They have, but you give back to, you give back to him.
What I'm taking from the instruction is, one, we want to know why we're paying for it before I do any work.
We not gonna pay for it.
Who brought you this?
Hope Langston, attorney for the city.
The attorney for the city?
All these people who live in the city.
Right. When they redistrict, see, see, when they redistrict, they, they didn't know what they were doing.
Uh, do you need a motion on this? No, no, I just need, I don't need a motion, I just, I never want to do a job unless you all tell me to do it, or one of you calls to do it.
Yeah, let them turn to do it.
That's all I need.
Let them turn to do it. That's right, let them turn, let them turn to do it.
I just want marching orders.
Your motion, now, make this motion for me, but.
Oh, yeah, that's right, for, 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 um, rezoning, for.
Helios Sage, and for this all out there.
What name is?
I'll get with Mr. Mercer and get both of the, uh, both of the solar, solar issues.
Common consent, that'd be alright. You do a common consent, that he give, that he advertise.
We do a motion, Mr. Brown, I motion, I move that we, uh, he start the process. Advertise the zoning.
Whatever we got to do to make it finally.
These two operate, yes.
Yep, and what we're doing, and I think.
I'm second your motion.
They have made applications, now we need to handle it. I think it's very clear, they've made a proper application.
We got a motion, we got a second, any discussion up? Hey, you booked, yes? Anybody want to make another motion?
Yeah, gentlemen. No, I have two issues.
Come up with the.
Alright, the, uh.
They're gonna cook.
Believe me, I'm ready to go. River Edge, we give them a donation every year of a hundred dollars, so they ask for their hundred dollars.
So move, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, so move. Yeah, so move.
Now, I, the, so it's approved, eh?
I make the motion, so I got second.
I make the motion.
I all done made the motion, you second.
I second, okay.
Hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars, hey, you booked, yes?
Alright, the, uh.
I've stayed.
Now, let's make this one more motion.
Alright, the, the, for the three projects that I have, I submitted one to you, Mr. Attorney, and there are two others. That is the people involved in a drawing of credit property, that's on New Bullard Road, to, uh, seek condemnation of that, that, that roadway that's in there. So that the county can gain access to, uh, pieces. And there are two others, and, uh, she probably had that information, I'll call her tomorrow, that's the only word I see, that's the only thing she delivered, Mr. Mercer. Okay, so there are two others that she gonna do, and all of that information should have been in your work from the past attorney, but you got none of it. That's what I'm done, and I want to get in there, Mark, so you got two weeks? Two weeks, get it condemned, or I'm going, you got to get me out of jail.
And you got to have this time of.
Well, you just hoop and holler.
If you'll stay after me and give me a few more details, I'd love it, thank you.
Have you, uh, tried what we did years ago, have a flat fee per acre and offer to, have you done that? Because condemnation can get expensive, and, uh, if you, you know, years ago, I forget how much an acre we pay, how much was it?
Eight twenty-five.
Well, it'd be a little more than that now, but.
Was it the whole acre?
Per acre.
Okay, yeah, because.
An acre would be half of that.
Be, because, because I had, they, they had a formula, that I had to work out, but I, I had to bow church road, you know, how much.
Eight twenty-five an acre, that's a chance of an acre, it's only two dollars.
So they, they got a formula, we had, I had to do that.
We do that formula years ago, back in the eighties.
It worked.
Eight twenty-five an acre is what we gave.
You think that, uh, twenty-five hundred acre might get it done now?
No, no, I, 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 I'd rather go this way. We just condemn it and go on, it's not a nickel, and I'll tell you why later.
Well, but the condemnation's gonna cost a pile of money.
No, it won't either. No, it won't. No.
It, it didn't cost me nothing, but what I had to pay, I had to bow church road, that's it.
I know, it was one of that.
I condemned it, by condemnation of.
You got a process, you put a road in there.
That's right.
Get it through a church if you want.
Is the plan sufficient for a little?
They ain't gonna get nowhere, we've been through all that, we got it in our, in our legal world, we've been through all that. Yeah, no, 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 ain't gonna cost us that much, fill out one paper, shoot it in there, and I'm gone.
It didn't cost us, it didn't, it didn't cost us that much on the turn of feet.
We had one person that, that took us to court, and the judge was trying to tell him, said, don't, no use me going through it, cause if we go through it, even if you win. The only thing they gonna do is file paperwork and keep working. I said, Judge, I've already done that, we went through it, doesn't happen. And the fellow filing complaint didn't even own the problem. I've been there, Mr. Dooley, I've been there.
Move the jury.
So move second. Third.
Any discussion, I'm about, you don't book it? Yes.
Yes.